Good evening and welcome to the Monday, May 24th, 2021 Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on May 20th, 2021 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Curly News. Mr. Mahmood, may we have a roll call, please?
Jean, I'm Mr. Heo, I'm gonna do the roll call. Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mr. Kidd?
Here.
Mr. Marini?
Here.
Ms. Maroon? Ms. Nurse?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Pulsifer? Ms. Stats?
Here.
Mr. Heo?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Angeliana. So now we have a motion to move into executive session, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of the meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough in the County of Somerset and the State of New Jersey as follows. One, the matters to be discussed are personnel matters. Two, the matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. May I have a motion in a second?
Motion.
Thank you, Ms. Marini. Thank you, Mr. Kidd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in executive session and we expect to return to public session at 6:30. Good evening again. We are back now from executive session. And Mr. Mahmood, if we could please have a roll call?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Marini?
Here.
Mrs. Nurse?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Present.
Mr. Pulsifer? Mrs. Stats?
Here.
Mr. Heo?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Mahmood. Now I'd like to welcome Gwen Thornton from New Jersey School Boards Association, who will be doing board training on this superintendent's evaluation process. Thank you, Gwen.
Okay, well, good evening. It is so nice to see all of you again. And I am very happy to be here. So I'm assuming I can control my own slides. So I'm really here to talk about the process. I know you have some new folks. And so I thought it would be very helpful to go through this process with you.
So Gwen, actually Dr. Intunez has the slide capability. So if you could just say next, when you want the next slide?
Okay, so the next slide, please. Thank you. So really, my purpose this evening is to go over the process, the legal guidelines, and then just as a reminder, if you have any board members who work or have family, not the board member themselves, but family members that work in the district, you would be conflicted out of participating in the process. I don't believe that any of your board members fall into that category. So all of you would be eligible to participate in this process. Next slide, please. So the statutory requirement is found in 18A, and it requires that the superintendent be evaluated annually, at least once a year. That evaluation has to be in writing, and the law does require that a full majority of the board participate in a meeting to discuss the finding. The evaluation is based on progress toward achievement of district goals and objectives, responsibilities of the superintendent, and other criteria as determined by the State Board of Education. And then under NJ 6A, which is the administrative code, think of that as the regulations that follow policy. So with law, there is the statute, but then there is the administrative code that really requires and spells out how it's to be done, just like your regulations implement your district policies. So it asks you to identify in your written report the areas of strength, the areas of needed improvement, if there are any, recommendations that you as a board might have for professional development, and then indicators of progress around student achievement. And the summary conference, again, must include a majority of the total board membership, not just the officers or not a couple of board members. It is really the board's opportunity to have a full discussion with the superintendent around the evaluation. And keep in mind that this is designed to be a communications tool to ensure that the board and the superintendent remain on the same page. And it's critically important that this be done on an annual basis. Next slide, please. So not only is it in statutory, in the statute, in 18A and in regulation, it is also part of CUSAC, the New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum, which is the state's monitoring process for all school districts. And in the Governance District Performance Review, there are two indicators. It says you must establish a policy and a contract to evaluate based on adoption of goals and performance measurements. And then secondarily, that all of the process will be completed by July 1. So there are 13 points associated in the Governance DPR with the evaluation process, which I think speaks to the importance that the state believes that the evaluation of the superintendent has, and speaks to your responsibility as a board of education to ensure that it is completed in a timely manner. So all aspects of this process must be done by July the 1st. And your county superintendents, when they come in and do their desk audit, or whether it's in person or remotely, they're going to be looking to make sure that this was completed in a timely way. The next slide, please. In terms of a calendar, this really begins, and it's a year-long process. It really begins with the establishment of your district goals. And then what happens is your superintendent obviously develop action plans to implement those goals, and throughout the year, provides progress updates to the board so that you know that progress is being made along with your community around the accomplishment of those goals. So typically, you would begin this process in April or early May. We're a little late. Not hugely late, but this has been an extraordinarily unusual year, which I needn't tell you all. You've been living it on a daily basis, so you know how complex a year it has been and how time-consuming it has been for all of your administrators, as well as all of you. So typically, the process begins with your superintendent entering his or her goals and entering his or her assessment of the progress that's been made over the course of the year on those goals. Once that happens and your superintendent enters those goals, excuse me, you will receive automatically an email from me letting you know that you have the opportunity now as board members to go in and enter your assessment. Next slide, please. You will see that this particular tool was developed between NJASA and NJSPA. We worked on the tool for about two and a half to three years. There was a committee of superintendents and staff members on NJSPA. And we worked on including some pieces that we think are very helpful. There are rubrics for each of the leadership standards. There are opportunities for your superintendent to enter sources of documentation and evidence links to that. And there are also those places that you may provide written comments on each of the goals, as well as the leadership standards, because the evaluation is really broken into two parts. The first part being progress toward achievement of district goals, and then the leadership standards that I'll talk about in a few minutes. Like all things that the board does, your written report that is the summary of all of the input compiled from all board members must reflect the majority perspective, because the board operates by majority. So I will return to you, because this is all done electronically, and we do not edit anything. We are not in the business of evaluating your superintendents. We are here to assist you in the process by making it easier for you to do it. You will get a compilation of all of the board member comments on both the standards, as well as the goals. And from that, you will be able to write a summative, either a narrative or an outline final report that you will share with the superintendent. That report must reflect the majority opinion. It is at that conference where the full board meets with the superintendent, that is with all things that are done by majority, the minority voice is protected. So if you have a minority perspective that differs from the written document, because let's say, for example, you believe that while your colleagues may think that a goal was achieved, you still have a concern around a particular aspect of it. It is at that conference where an individual board member has responsibility to say, you know, my colleagues believe that this goal was achieved, but I still have a particular concern in an area. So that the superintendent, again, is well aware of where each member of the board stands, but the document reflects the will of the majority. And that's an important concept for all of you to remember as you go through that. You do have that opportunity, regardless of where you fall on the continuum, to have your voice heard during that conference with the superintendent. The next slide, please. So the steps begin really with annual district goal setting, and again, those progress and updates through the year. Superintendent enters their goals and assessments, and then non-conflicted board members go in and enter theirs. You will get the compilation. The board will review the compilation, and then the full board meets with the superintendent again to review that document. Next. One of the things that we suggest that it's a little late for is having a pre-evaluation conference, much like that much like superintendents and principals do with their teachers, just to get an update on where you are in terms of the goals, and to talk about student progress, any questions and concerns, and then to set up a calendar so that you don't get rushed toward the end of the year. I always encourage boards to set up that calendar if they can, early in the course of the year. Get those dates on the board calendar so that any meetings that you have to have can be held in conjunction with a regular board meeting, so you're not having extra meetings. When it runs into June, it becomes very difficult, because there are so many end-of-the-year school activities that board members and the superintendent are generally involved in, that sometimes it becomes a rush. And you don't want to do this in a rushed manner. This is someone's professional evaluation, and it should be done thoughtfully and carefully, in the same way that if you work or worked and are retired, would want your evaluation done within your professional position. Next, please. So here's what the goal section looks like. You can see that there's a section there that where the goal would be put in by the superintendent. Then the superintendent puts in his or her rating, achieved, satisfactory progress made, little or no progress made. And then where you as an individual board member, again, would be able to put that same rating in. Either you believe that the goal was achieved, satisfactory progress was made, little or no progress was made. The superintendent will provide information there to support their rating. And then there is a box that will expand as you write and type, where you can put your comments. I would encourage you to provide as much explanation to support your assessment as possible. The more detailed you can be in your response to your assessment in terms of explanation, the better the overall evaluation will be, and the more helpful it will be, because it will help provide information to the superintendent. Goals and skills are transferable. So if you think someone's done an extraordinary job in a particular area, please take the time to say why. If you think that, for example, little or no progress has been made, please be specific around why you believe that. People cannot remediate or fix what they don't know. So just marking something as little or no progress, absent any kind of explanation, is not helpful in terms of communications. So I really believe that it's the more detail you can provide as an individual board member, and then as a collective board, the more effective the evaluation will be. The next slide, please. So the evaluation standards, which is the second part, come from the ISLECK standards. The ISLECK standards were developed and agreed to by all educational leaders across the state of New Jersey, including supervisors, directors, principals, vice principals, assistant superintendents and superintendents. And there are six of them. And next slide, please. You will be able to see what those standards are. The first one is mission, vision, and core values. And then governance, ethics, and professional norms, operations management, which is really the nuts and bolts operation of the district, curriculum assessment, curriculum instruction assessment, and school achievement, and then community of care, equity, and family engagement. And the last one, professional capacity, which is really professional development for the staff and the community of school district personnel recruiting, retaining high-quality staff and providing professional development for the staff. These standards were chosen primarily because superintendents believe that these reflected more closely the work of a superintendent. Next slide, please. Here you can see the actual standard, mission, vision, and core values. And then we have provided some suggestions of what you might think about as a board member when you think about mission, vision, and core values, okay? Agendas and minutes from meetings where those were developed, reviewed, or updated. Allocation of resources and the budget to support your mission and vision statement. Agenda where data was used to review attainment toward the district goals. And then there is a section where links can be provided by the superintendent to some of those district pieces that indicate work that took place in this standard and in each of the six standards. So that as you're going through this as a board member, and you're trying to think about this particular standard, you can click on a link to see actual evidence of the work that the superintendent has done. Because keep in mind, this is an annual evaluation. It covers 12 months' worth of work from last July 1st, or 2nd, or July 1st, because it has to be, the last year has to be finished by then. So it's a whole year's worth of work. So you really want to think about it in those terms, not just what's happened in the last month, the last two months, but looking out across the full year. So those links are very helpful, I think, for board members, because I don't know about you, but I have trouble with thinking about what I did two weeks ago, much less last August, or last September, or October, or November, especially in what has been such a crazy year. I think it's very helpful for your superintendent to provide you those links, so that you can see the actual evidence. Next, please. Each standard has an individual rubric. You are asked to rate in each of the standards, performance as exemplary, proficient, as an area for growth, unsatisfactory, or not observed. Not observed is neither a positive nor a negative. It's a neutral. For those of you who are brand-new board members, who have only been on the board since January, there may be areas within the standards that you have not yet had an opportunity to observe, especially given the remote nature that we've been living with, with the pandemic. And so if you don't feel that you have sufficient information to make an informed judgment, you can simply, you can simply rate a, I apologize, a standard as not observed, okay? Keep in mind that the rubric, the definitions for exemplary, proficient, area for growth, and unsatisfactory are different for each standard. So you have to read individually the rubric for each standard before you rate the standard. The next slide, please. So here's, and this is an example of what it would look like. Please note that there are seven indicators in this particular standard. Each of those indicators builds to accomplishment of the overall standard. So in this example that we've just developed for you, in two of the indicators, the board member rated the superintendent as exemplary, and in the remaining ones, of the remaining five, rated the superintendent's performance as proficient. So then as you look down to the overall assessment that you're going to give of the standard, you can see here from looking at this example, that one would have to mark proficient, because that is where the greatest number of indicators fell in this particular standard. So as you go through all of the standards, there are multiple indicators for each standard. You will be asked to rate each of those. And then you will have to give an overall rating for each of the six standards. Next, please. So once you have completed each of those six standards and the goals portion of the document, you will be, you will hit complete and submit. I can see just your last name and the date you finished it. I am not privy to, nor do I want to see any board member's individual evaluation of your superintendent. I hit a button, and through the magic of technology, it is all compiled. I can't tell one person's comments from another. If I were to read it, which I generally don't even ever read it, I simply give access to the board president, assuming they're not conflicted, who then shares it with the full board. You must send a rice notice to your chief school administrator. It is the one time a year the board is permitted to review and discuss the compilation to determine the majority opinion without the superintendent present. The board president or designee writes the annual performance report. We have a new template to assist you in that process. Some boards, the president and vice president write it. On some boards, the personnel committee does it. It is up to your board to determine who writes the summary report. So at some.
Gwen, I have a question. So this means it's in a closed session, and it's only the nine board members?
Correct.
Okay.
That is correct. It is only the nine board members. It is not the business administrator. You can have your board attorney be present. If that's the norm in your district, you certainly can do that. But no other staff members should be present. It is just the board members. And because it is a personnel document, it goes without saying that it is all confidential and needs to remain absolutely confidential, okay? And that's a very important piece. Once you have written that summative evaluation, and the board has come to consensus that it reflects the will of the majority, then you would schedule a separate meeting, and you can do it before a regular meeting or after a regular meeting in closed session. Again, the superintendent must be raised a second time, where the full board will sit and review the document with the superintendent. We strongly recommend that ahead of that meeting with the full board, you share with the superintendent a copy of the summative evaluation, so that the superintendent can come to that meeting, prepared to discuss it and review it with the Board of Education, so you can have a fruitful conversation. I would not want to be handed my evaluation and react to it in 10 minutes or less. I think that that's not a good practice. I think you want to give your superintendent time to read it, reflect, and come prepared to the meeting to discuss with the Board of Education. Next, please. So we have, the law requires that you provide the summative evaluation. We have a template that we've developed here, and it's available online on our, and I will tell you where all of those links are, so you can see it. Some boards write a narrative. I had one board that used to do it, no kidding, in iambic pantameter. Every year, they would do the superintendent's summative evaluation in a poem. They had an English teacher who loved to write an iambic pantameter, and every year she would put it together, and the superintendent loved it. But typically, most boards will either use a narrative, or they will use this template, which is more of an outlined structure. But again, if you're going to rate someone, you know, in need of improvement, or there's an area where you think that there's some additional professional development that's required, please say why. You know, all of us, you know, if someone says to me, you know, you have a shortfall in this area in terms of my job performance, that's fine. I understand that. But tell me why. Tell me what it is that I'm not doing. And again, if you think that I'm doing an outstanding job in an area, please say why as well, because skills sets are hopefully transferable from one area to another. So it's very helpful, again, to provide supporting documentation, okay? Next. Again, the leadership standards, you would then go through this. This is from the template, and there's an area for marking the rating, and then that the board is determined, and then putting the majority remarks in the area that's included. Next. Okay. And again, you know, you can check more than one standards, where they've demonstrated strength. And if you think in some of the standards, there's an area for professional growth and improvement, you can put that in as well. If there's none, then you don't have to check it. So you just need to know that as well. The next one, please. So again, the board and superintendent meet to discuss. The minority voice is heard and expressed. And again, I would absolutely encourage you, that if you have a different perspective than the majority of your colleagues, that this is your opportunity to be heard. It is helpful to the superintendent. I have never met a superintendent who did not want to know where all of their board members stood on every subject and in every area. So it is helpful to take that opportunity. I think you can say anything that needs to be said, depending upon the words you choose and the tone you take. Next. Okay. So here's where it is. I get calls about this all the time. On our front page, www.njsba, all the way down at the bottom, on the right-hand side, there is a link that says Superintendent and Board Self-Evaluation. If you click there, it will take you right to the evaluation page. Your username is your district email address. Whatever email address that Amen has given you, which is your HTTPS email, is the email you must use as your username. That's your full username. If you have not been on our website, and you don't have a password, once you enter your username, you can click, and it will give you, take you to a section where you can ask for, to get a password, and you'll be able to set your own password. I encourage you, which I shouldn't do in front of an IT person who's probably running this meeting, but to write down that password, because if you don't, we're gonna get to next June, and you're not gonna remember what it is. And if you don't go on our website often, you'll just find yourself in a position of having to reset your password multiple times, which can be a pain in the neck, okay? So scroll all the way down to the bottom of our front page, and it's on the right-hand side. Just click there. Enter your username, set a password. It will take you in. Like the FASA and many other kinds of documents, you can go in and out of the superintendent evaluation, so you don't have to do it all in one sitting, so that you have time to think about it and do it thoughtfully and carefully. And so, you know, you can do the goals portion, and then if you have to run and take your kids somewhere or do an errand, you can sign out and then go back in and sign in, and it'll take you right to where you left off, okay? Just don't hit complete and submit until you are ready to be completely finished. Next. Some points to consider. Again, this is not a once-a-year event. You're really looking at the. Um, you're really looking at the totality, um, of a full year. And so you want to make sure that, that you, um, are thinking in those terms as you're going through it. Um, again, we encourage superintendents to develop a system to retain evidence. Um, and again, you know, the responsibility is that all board members need to fully participate. Um, and to keep in mind that it is a communications tool. And that it's to ensure that the board and superintendent remain on the same page. Um, and so that two-way communication is critically important. Um, for you all to, to think about. So when you go on to our website, um, and you sign in, there are a number of documents there. That can be very helpful. There's a frequently asked questions. Um, so if you're a brand-new board member, that's something you might wanna look at. We also have a guidebook, um, there as well. We have a sample, um, of the total evaluation that if you wanna print it out ahead of time. Not filled out with your superintendent's goals or anything like that, but if you just wanna see the totality of the evaluation instrument, you can print it out. Um, some board members like to do that and think about it before they go in and do their evaluation. Um, and so there's also a recorded webinar on this process. Um, on that part of our website. So again, there are a lot of resources for you. As you're going in and thinking about doing the evaluation. Um, and then of course, if you have any questions or any concerns, difficulties. You are more than welcome to email me, call me. Um, uh, again, um, it is a process. Um, we've tried to make it as easy as we can for board members. Um, once I see that all nine of you have completed the document. I s- simply hit a button, it compiles and I send it electronically. Um, and then you all take it from there to, to the finish line. Next. Questions that you have on the process? That I can potentially answer for you.
Well, we have access to this presentation, uh, after.
I will, I will send it to, uh, well, actually, um, Lisa has it already. So yes, you will have access to it. Actually, when I think about it, you already have it.
I, I think it sounds like though, because it's May twenty-fourth already, that we need to. Maybe spend the next fifteen minutes trying to find, figure out some timeline. If we would like to meet our July first deadline.
Exactly. I would agree.
And if I, if I'm understanding correctly, it would be Dr. Antunes who put, who fills out her goals, right, that she had for this year. So that's the first step. And then once they're all in, then it's our turn to go in and review and put in our.
Right, and as soon as she enters, um, I will tell you, there is a forty-eight hour. Um, wait time between the time that your superintendent enters and the time you receive the email from me. We found in doing this over the last couple of years. That superintendents oftentimes think of additional things they meant to say, should have said. What I edit, they wanna add, they wanna delete. And so what would happen is they'd call us, we'd have to open it back up. When we opened it back up, it deleted everything they'd put in. So we've, in collaboration with superintendents, agreed. That forty-eight hours gives them time after they enter the goals. If they think and reflect and there are things they wanna add, they wanna change. Um, or they come up with an additional document that they wanna add as a link for evidence. Um, so it takes forty-eight hours after the superintendent enters for you to get that email from me. Um, but you will all get an email from me at your district address that says you may go in. And, and enter your assessment once that's on elapsed.
And then once, you said that once you have all nine of ours, you hit a button to submit. And then how quickly does the system, did you say, generate a report?
Um, instantaneously.
Instantaneously, okay.
Uh, you know, I can get it to you ten minutes after it's done. It's just a matter of having everybody finish. Um, and everyone, once you agree to a timeline, should make sure that you adhere to that timeline. It's not fun to have to have the board president chase around, um, board members to get them to finish. Um, especially when you have a statutory timeline. Now, I would tell you that the last step in this process. Um, that is separate and apart from the superintendent's evaluation, but is just as valuable. Is for the board to do a self-evaluation. You know, you've held yourself accountable, you've held the superintendent accountable for their performance. It's a wonderful opportunity for the board, um, prior to doing your goal setting for next school year. To do your board self-evaluation. To talk about what you can do and how you can be more effective as a board team in supporting the administration in their work. Um, and so the board's self-evaluation does not have a statutory timeline. Um, for a while, it was in the, uh, governance D P Rs, a requirement under C U S A. They eliminated that when they streamlined C U S A. But it is still a best practice for the board to look at themselves and say, how have we operated this year? How can we be more effective as a board team, um, in providing support to your administration? And your superintendent and your business administrator, um, can. Be part of that self-assessment because it's all part of this, the board team. Your superintendent is a member of the board, albeit without a vote. And your business administrator slash, but in his role as board secretary. Um, is also a critical element of the success of the board. So the self-evaluation can be filled out by the nine board members. Um, your business administrator and your, um, superintendent as well. But that does not have a statutory timeline and this needs to be done first and foremost because it's a state requirement. And because it'll cost you thirteen points on C U S A. And you don't wanna lose those points for no reason.
So I think, Jean, maybe we should spend the next ten minutes coming up with a, a timeline? I mean, I don't.
Mrs. Trigio, I wouldn't be prepared to do that this evening. Come up with the timeline.
So Ms. Nurse, um, as I had mentioned previously, so Dr. Antunes and I do. In our weekly meetings, we do, we have discussed this and so we will continue to discuss this and to make sure that we meet that July first. We do recognize that it's very important. Are there any other questions from board members on the evaluation process? All right, okay, seeing none.
Wait, I, I do have one quick question. So, so Gwen, if you see that nine, all nine have not submitted the, their, their evaluations, all nine board members. Do you then give a heads up to, to, in this case, Jean Trigio, the board president? So as you said, she can chase after.
I do, and you also, Jean should be also able to see who has completed and who is not. So she's not. But I do check, uh, but I do check it daily, and twice a day. And weekends. I sent a couple out, completed over the weekend, so that folks would have it. Um, you know, when I see that they've done it, I, I check all the time, seven days a week. During eval season right through July first, and then I stop.
Thank you.
Cause I wanna make sure everybody gets and, and gets it done. And not because it's a compliance issue. It really is important to provide. Feedback and information and communicate between the board and the superintendent. Because we know that those boards and superintendents that have effective relationships, that communicate well. Have higher levels of student achievement. So at the end of the day, it's critically important.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Thornton. Um, so to the board, are there any other questions? All right, seeing none, then, um, thank you very much, Ms. Thornton.
Have a good evening. Take care. Don't forget to thank all those first responders, including yourselves. Because it is, you've been in the educational space, the first responders that have kept the schools open and going. So thank you for that. Thank you for your service this past year. If I don't see you, have a wonderful summer. Um, get some rest, go to the beach, even if only mentally. Um, and I look forward to seeing you all in person the next time we have a meeting. So, take care.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mahmoud, so now it is at seven twenty and our regular board meeting is scheduled to start at seven thirty. So does that mean you take a brief nine-minute recess or eight-minute recess?
Yes, President Trigio, this is the time where we could take a little recess and come back when we promised the public we'd open, uh, again at seven thirty.
Okay, so, um, may I have a motion in a second? To take a recess?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Nurse. Thank you, Mr. Kidd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye, so thank you very much. We will be back at seven thirty. Thank you and good evening. Welcome back to the Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. We are back from executive session and earlier just now with the New Jersey School Boards training. Mr. Mahmoud, if we could have a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mr. Kidd?
Here.
Mr. Marini?
Present.
Mrs. Maroon? Mrs. Nurse?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Pulsofer? Mrs. Stats?
Here.
And Ms. Trigio?
Here.
We, we have a call.
Thank you, Mr. Mahmoud. If we could now please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. I'd like to acknowledge the correspondence that we received as listed. And turn it over to Dr. Antunes for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Trigio. Would we like to move that one item forward and then go through the superintendent's report?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we are asking the board to consider moving. Under Personnel, thirteen point six dot one, motion to approve the appointment of Luisa Rodriguez. As the Assistant to the Business Administrator.
Thank you, Dr. Antunes. May I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Stats.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd. Are there any discussion? If not, then Mr. Mahmoud, if we could have a roll call, please?
Surely, Mr. Gillette? Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Mr. Marini?
Yes.
Mrs. Mar, uh, Mrs. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
And Ms. Trigio?
Yes.
Congratulations, Ms. Rodriguez, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mahmoud.
Okay, I'd like to begin the superintendent's report with a quick presentation for the Seal of Biliteracy. So excuse me for, I have to stop sharing and then reshare. So just give me a sec. Okay.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining me as we recognize our seniors who have earned their state seal of biliteracy. My name is Roberto Lugo and I'm the District Supervisor of Rural Languages in E S L. This evening, I am thrilled to be able to recognize our high school seniors who have earned the New Jersey State Seal of Biliteracy. What is the seal? The New Jersey State Seal of Biliteracy is awarded to high school seniors who have demonstrated an ability to speak in two or more languages. By achieving the Seal of Biliteracy, students demonstrate that they are able to speak, read, listen and write. In two or more languages at a high level of proficiency. There is a twofold requirement that each senior must meet. First, they must demonstrate proficiency in English by meeting English Language Arts graduation requirements. Or attain the appropriate cut score in the access for E L L's assessment for English language learners. Second, they must demonstrate a linguistic proficiency level of at least intermediate mid. According to the American Council on the Teaching of Foreign Languages Proficiency Guidelines. In order to accomplish this, all students who take our A P language classes are encouraged to take the stamp test. A test that determines their language proficiency in four domains: reading, writing, listening and speaking. On January nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, New Jersey became the fifteenth state to implement a legislated statewide seal of biliteracy. Hillsborough has been offering students an opportunity to earn the Seal of Biliteracy since two thousand seventeen. And as you can see, I am pleased to announce that every year since then, we have seen a wonderful growth in the amount of students earning the seal. This couldn't be possible without the support of board members, administrators, staff and families of Hillsborough Township. In placing a high value on rural languages, we offer our students wonderful opportunities to learn about and appreciate different cultures. Communities and customs. Starting in the fifth grade, our students have an opportunity to begin what we hope will be a lifelong joy of learning another language. Maybe even two or three. I'd like to also take this time to recognize the rural language teachers who work tirelessly to instill within their students a love of languages. And to the students who have earned this wonderful honor, the long hours you have committed to the study of your language have finally paid off. But the work is not finished, as there are now new ways to use the languages that you have learned. Without further ado, I'd like to now mention each senior by name. French. Napun Banerji. Margaret Bardwell. Alyssa Benito. Dima Bischof Hashin. Janine Bischof Hashin. Chloe Colapano. Cindy Day. Anisha Desai. Natalie Fortes. Arthur Alexander Gremer. Anjana Gulapuk Paliam. Maggie Johnson. Caitlin Kazanzis. Livia Kong. Megan Curves. Lucas Lopez. Trinitia Palamgappali. Lindsay Probola. Sabna Rajapuri. Shreya Rastogi. April May Reagan. Sueta Reddy. Nihal Saxena. Sonia Shah. Ashna Sehban. For German? Bene Bagat. Peter Kavanagh. Gorkamo Chima. Sabrina Ilers. Olivia Halverson. Gandalf Hug. Mark McLaughlin. Sophia Nomoski. Aryan Patel. Mara Shah. Emily Trujillo. Philip Verone. For Italian? Sean Choxey. Gabriela Jolie. Connor Hampton. Christopher Michele. Cole Monti. Madison Munoz. Yigma Patel. Gloria Realbuto. Andrew Reed. Christina Saka. For Mandarin Chinese? Aitlin Chiwi. Phoebe Philaramo. Ishwari Nagno. Eileen Wen. Ritu Patel. Risha Patel. Samuel Renz. Zixun, Zixion Xiu. Hui Tong Zhao. For Spanish? Abby Agape. Nikita Agarwal. Jason Berlina. Jessica Benito. Claudine Besasparis. Maya Shri Bhuyan. Mia Bosebio. Naveen. Naveen Oparay. Priyanka Bose. Douglas Boylan. Carolina Caballero Mayoral. Oliver Camacho Escamilla. Fiorella Castillo Murillo. Alexander Solvantes. Kylie Chen. Lucia Truvu. Vishva. Chidambaram. Kim Churinos. Michelle Danilchuk. Julia Dunne. Sean Desai. Haley Diaz. Isabel Diaz. Hazem Alkati. Jack Ennis. Nora Farrow. Stephanie Fuentes. Lippi Dowda. Emily Grodsky. Perrin Gupta. Julia Hobson. Jeremiah Howe. Andy Jane. Skylar Jeffries. Marissa Jojo. Baroon Kandala. Meida Kosina. Ubishri Kaushik. Patrick Kelly. Kartik Kerr. Tashuk Koslu. Casey Kirnen. Arivid Krishna. Aditi Kubor. Marcus Lu. Sia Muhajja. Michelle Menoin. Valentino Marconi. Justin Martinez. Logan Miller. Gabriela Nasimian. Samantha Oliver. Shandy Ortiz. Sean Orniak. Emily Penn. Ritu Patel. Simran Patel. Sneha Patel. Tejas Patel. Ryan Pearson. Mia Pinto. Lauren Radomski. Mejica Ramon. Dimitri Ramirez. Ayush Rastogi. Shreya Sania. Sabrina Sakera. Janosh Shah. Muskan Shah. Catherine Shanahan. Madison Silvestri. Delaney Smith. Ariana Zap. Jessica Tuck. Megan Wilkie. Ethan Wolfkowski. Naveya Young Joyner. Grace Zheng. Once again, congratulations to all of the seniors who have earned this wonderful award, and thank you very much for your time.
Congratulations to all of our students who earned the seal of biliteracy, and thank you to Mr. Lugo for creating this presentation this evening. I would like to continue my superintendent's report with a few quick items and reminders as we begin the final weeks of school. Because we only use two of the three emergency days, schools will be closed this Friday, May twenty eighth, and then, of course, we're closed Monday as well in honor of Memorial Day. I have to just point out again how miraculous the fact that we only utilized one day when we were hacked with cyber, with the cyber attack, that we only had to be closed for one full day. That's directly due to our technology team, our business office for jumping on on the situation and moving us forward. So I think everybody will enjoy a long weekend. We continue to receive positive communication from Governor Murphy on the reopening of schools next year. We are excited to once again remind everyone that we are planning for a full reopening in September, full day, five days a week with lunch, as long as nothing changes between now and then and the social distancing requirements are lifted in schools. I look forward to sharing plans with students, parents, and staff over the next few weeks. Parents of seniors be on the lookout for information from Ms. Bingert on this year's graduation. It should be coming out tomorrow or Wednesday. For all families, important information regarding Chromebook collections will be sent shortly. As in the past, there is an option to retain devices for the summer, and more information will be forthcoming. The board has been getting many questions about mask requirements in school, and per the CDC guidance, masks will continue to be required in elementary and secondary schools as of right now. Additionally, per CDC guidance, social distancing will continue to be required in settings where masking is required, including schools. For families who withdrew their children from the district last fall and plan on returning to Hillsborough Schools and registering your child for September, we welcome you back with open arms. Please consider registering as soon as possible so we can properly place your child or children in a classroom, schedule transportation if applicable, and properly staff our schools. Please note that we do have limited staff members who register elementary students over the summer, so we encourage you to register before the end of June to allow for a smooth transition. Thank you in advance for your patience and understanding. If end-of-year events in our schools aren't limited, we are able to offer more end-of-year events than we have in quite a while. The health and safety of our students always comes first and will drive some of these decisions. I know that some will be fine with this next announcement and others will not. However, although we've been looking at a variety of ways to attempt to bring at least some students back for full days for many reasons, including resources surrounding transportation, we are simply unable to do so for the remainder of the school year. Playgrounds are being refreshed and reopened, and we remind the community that they are not cleaned daily by the district. It is an honor and privilege to announce that Hillsborough High School senior Yusef Abdulhalim was one of one hundred sixty-one students from across the country to become part of the fifty-seventh class of U.S. Presidential Scholars. This outstanding accomplishment is based upon academic success, essays, school evaluations, and transcripts, as well as evidence of community service, leadership, and demonstrated commitment to high ideals. More than six thousand candidates qualified for the two thousand twenty-one awards with one young man and one young woman chosen as finalists from each state. Congratulations, Yusef, on this amazing accomplishment. We look forward to hearing more about your future endeavors. I'm excited to share that as a follow-up to my January twenty-fifth announcement that Hillsborough High School student Aravind Krishan was named one of the top three hundred scholars in the Eightieth Regeneron Science Talent Search. He was also named as a finalist in the Regeneron International Science and Engineering Fair. Congratulations, Aravind, on this outstanding achievement. As you are likely aware, Governor Murphy has eliminated the travel advisory for domestic travel. The State Department of Health, local Department of Health, as well as the district physician maintain that the district ought to follow CDC guidelines pertaining to domestic travel, which state that fully vaccinated individuals and individuals who have recovered from COVID- nineteen within the last three months need not quarantine. Unvaccinated individuals should get tested with a viral test three to five days after travel and stay home and self-quarantine for a full seven days after travel. Even if you test negative, stay home and self-quarantine for the full seven days. If you decide not to get tested, stay home and self-quarantine for ten days after travel. Again, while there's conflicting information circulating, please be assured that this is the most updated guidance as of this afternoon from the New Jersey Department of Health and the CDC, and we encourage you to consult their respective websites for more information. Just want to remind everybody that we are currently in the second phase of our repair, replace, and revive referendum projects. Among other projects, this phase includes HVAC work and the building of the security vestibules. All summer programs will continue as scheduled as this work is being completed. And finally, this year, the Board of Education members and administrators will join in the Township Memorial Day Parade being held on Saturday, May twenty ninth, with a rain date of Sunday, May thirtieth at ten a.m. In addition, members of the HEA, as well as the Hillsborough High School Marching Band and Choir, will be joining us. We thank them for bringing music and singing to this event as we honor and salute our veterans. That concludes the superintendent's report, Mrs. Trujillo.
Thank you very much, Dr. Antunes. Now I'd like to move to committee reports. And if I could, if Ms. Stats, if you would like to do the education committee, I think Ms. Maroon had reached out to you about that, and at the same time, if you'd like to also do communications.
Thank you, Ms. Trujillo. The education committee met on May twelfth. Dr. Feltry shared that the middle school science program is built around the next-generation science standards and that we're going to adopt the Open Science Ed program, and it's less expensive than our current program. And the teachers were part of the selection process, and they're all on board, and they have received professional development. We were also told about the three summer reads for the Hillsborough Middle School. I believe they're on tonight's agenda. Also, regarding the Learning Acceleration Grant, Dr. Feltry said that we were allocated a little over thirty-three thousand dollars for their learning acceleration portion of the CR-SR funds, SR2 funds. And there are specific guidelines for that. The math portion will focus on the middle school and high school transition. In literacy, the focus will be on the lower-grade levels, and the visual and performing arts will focus on ensembles since the students have not had the opportunity during the pandemic. And in the area of mental health, the grant does allow for funding of parent learning opportunities in addition to student counseling. We also discussed ways that the district can actions that the district can take to assist parents in promoting at-home learning activities for learning acceleration. And some of these suggestions and tips may be shared on the district's Facebook page and perhaps on the website. For the Summer Credit Advancement Program, that there's been enough interest that we can continue on with it, and we have enough paid registrants for the program to run, and it will also include our ability to provide financial assistance to a few students in need. Dr. Antunes shared that she anticipates that this will become a popular program, and perhaps in the future, we can open it up to other districts and making more revenue-producing. We also briefly discussed the shortfalls of the Option Two program. The Option Two program consists of courses taken elsewhere or online, and the challenge is that the curriculum may not align with the district curriculum, and sometimes the students do not achieve what is necessary to satisfactorily pass the final exam. Regarding the Advanced Math and Advanced Literacy Update, there was a presentation on April twenty-ninth with fifty-seven participants, and there was also a town hall meeting on May eleventh and also May thirteenth. The May eleventh one had six people. This preceded our education committee meeting. But those meetings took place during the typical work hours, so we were concerned about maybe offering something in the evening. And I believe Dr. Feltry followed up, and there have been no requests for an evening town hall meeting. But they can find access to information about the presentation on the Otten Road Intermediate School website. Dr. Feltry shared also, due to the unexpected retirements of Ms. Nurse and Ms. Osie, the administration is considering whether or not the district will move forward with the same implementation schedule for math. And she also suggested that the elementary school principals could share the link to the presentation with their school community. Some other concerns, and this is all about the detracting, the detracking, that if, perhaps, we should consider that both the detracking in math and in literacy should occur simultaneously. The information should be available to parents of K through four students, and that information can be shared by the principals. That the collaboration with teachers on curriculum is encouraged by the New Jersey School Boards, that increases the likelihood of teacher buy-in and the success of the implementation. But also, sometimes that's not practical. And about monitoring the success of the detracking and possibly having articles about the tracking shared with the committee. We also discussed the the issue of cheating. And Dr. Feltry shared that there is no way to gather concrete information on the actual incidence of cheating. That a possible preventative measure is to have more open-ended questions and that the consequence of cheating is a score of zero. And Dr. Antunes said that this is a concern that many superintendents have. So that's my lengthy summary of the education committee meeting. Now on to Communications Committee meeting. We met on May thirteenth. We talked about the two possible dates for the board retreat. I believe that was discussed at every committee meeting. And we also talked about the Board of Ed portion of the district website. It includes photos of the board members and little bios, and it also includes the chain of communication. And there's also a district communication chain that will be shared. And Dr. Antunes shared with us information about climate survey vendors. They're certainly currently getting quotes for climate survey, and this will be important to survey the entire community on what their appetite for spending is as we consider possible future referendums for tax levy increase, land acquisition, new high school, et cetera, as well as more general climate questions. It will most likely be this coming October when the climate survey will be ready for a community. And it will be a one-time survey. And we should consider public relations events followed by surveys based upon input from events. And we talked again about the community outreach, central registrar, and currently, a job description is being developed. And we also considered maybe sending out a Google survey to seniors and their parents to find out if they're interested in providing personal email addresses so they can remain updated with information about our district once they graduate or their children graduate. And we also addressed the detracking issue, some of the concerns as was mentioned in the education committee. We were hopeful that it could have been maybe less confusing and more consistent discussion of a possible presentation at a board meeting. And and that's it for that. And also, like Dr. Antunes, we talked about the Q and A session prior to the April twenty-sixth board meeting, and it was successful in addressing many concerns from the parents and that there will be spring into summer events where administrators and board members will be at various district locations to highlight some of the referendum projects and other issues. um, to highlight some of the referendum projects and other issues and, uh, uh, Mr. Goodhue, the HEA president, uh, is also willing to be part of that. And that's it for communications.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stats. Mr. Gillette, would you, um, give the operations report?
You said me? I don't, okay. Um, thank you, Mr. Gillette. Operations committee met on May 11th, uh, 2021. Um, we spent some time talking about, uh, the professional appointments uh, that will appear on our meeting tonight. Uh, we specifically, uh, spent some time talking about, um, if there's, uh, if there are better or worse times to appoint, uh, professionals. Um, Mr. Mahmood reminded us that although we are, um, uh, obligated by law to make the appointments, uh, once a year at this time for July 1st, uh, we can, uh, change professionals at any time at our discretion. They, uh, work at, um, at the will of the board. Um, so we took a look at that. We are, Kathy Major, who was our food service manager from Sedexo, uh, was on the meeting. And she talked about, uh, how the food service program went this year at the schools. You know, I say this because people are not going to understand that we didn't have lunch this year. How, how can we generate any revenue? But in fact, um, many students, many more students uh, took lunch than would normally take lunch because they, it was, uh, essentially free, although we did have reimbursement. So, um, we actually, um, generated surplus, uh, so far this year up to, I think, the end of April of uh, $725,000. Now our guaranteed surplus in the contract is something like 330. So we, um, 330, 300? 375?
240.
240? Okay, so even, even less. So, um, right, so our guarantee surplus, that's next to guarantees that we're making, um, uh, profit, not really profit, but like surplus above our expenses is the 249 money would go into uh, Fund 60, which is available to fund anything within the, uh, food service area, including, um, employees. Uh, but it's way above that 725. It's because, um, yeah, the meals are free, but the reimbursement from the government is great. Um, her skills at, um, purchasing are tremendous. And that's how you make a profit, buy low and sell high, but really selling it back to the government in its essence. So, um, so that was good news. Uh, we took some, uh, just a little bit of time talking about a policy that we talked about before for, uh, booster clubs and other organizations, but I really didn't have any time, uh, to get into that uh, too much. I did want to say today that we, um, um, Mr. Mahmood and, uh, Ms. Bennett, who was our transportation supervisor, she, um, she, uh, uh, proposed, uh, a new position, or I try, can I, can I talk about it today? Okay, I didn't know if I was allowed to talk about it. Um, uh, sort of a lead driver position. She has someone that works with her in the office that is a driver, but also takes other responsibilities, but is just classified as a driver. Um, that really shouldn't be the case. If you're doing something else other than driving, you should be, that should be another position. So, um, Mr. Mahmood is investigating exactly how that would work, but the, uh, committee was uh, in favor of, um, a, a line that position to be created certainly. And would, would be in favor of, um, approving it when it, when it is, uh, created. Uh, let's see. And then we talked, uh, briefly about, um, uh, transitioning board meetings away from, uh, the type of meeting that we're having today with, um, with, through Zoom uh, to, um, uh, uh, more of a hybrid meeting, no Zoom. People, um, public in as many as would allow at the time and maybe making that transition at sometime during June. Not necessarily the first June meeting, but sometime during June or in July, if, if it's not feasible to do in June, but we're transitioning. And, um, I think that was it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gillette. And now I will give the governance committee report. At governance, we reviewed several bylaws as we had said that we would during the board goal setting portion. The one bylaw that is moving forward for tonight's first reading is Article 145. And it's the board member resignation and removal. It is not as onerous or serious as it sounds. It is prescribed by law. Basically, there were some changes in the New Jersey statutes and then further, there was some information with respect to how consecutive meetings are counted. So we clarified it to be three consecutive board meetings without the clause that they may be removed. So this is not required in terms of like the board does not need to act on it. It says that they may be removed. But we don't expect to see that happen. Um, there was three other board policies or board bylaws, board committees, 155, that still needs further discussions. So administration is going to take a look at the previous versions of 155 and make some recommendations. Board members on the committee had some comments about what they'd like to see and the public who has been part of our board meeting knows that that was a bylaw with some robust discussion. The other two commit, sorry, the other two bylaws, 164 and 167, which refer to conduct of board meetings and public participation in board meetings will also be updated mainly to reflect current practice. So if you review 164, the conduct of board meetings, what is listed there is not actually the order in which we conduct this, uh, updated to reflect our current practice. Further, 167, public participation mainly with respect to how long the pu- the public may speak is not consistent with 164. So that will be cleaned up and I do not expect there to be too much objection, which basically will reflect what we currently have in section 9.1 of the public agenda. concludes my governance committee report. And I'd like to turn it over now to Mr. Oliver for the HR report.
So we had a very quick meeting because Mr. Gillette's operation meeting took, um, an extended period of time. So we were cut short. I'm just, I'm just kidding. Um, we, um, we reviewed some policies which will be on tonight's agenda. Um, we talked about a new position, um, to help, uh, Joel out in the IT area. I think it's been said numerous times that we're very lucky. Um, sometimes you make your own luck by having good talented people. Uh, we were down one day with the cyber attack. Many other districts were down for weeks. Um, so, you know, I think enhancing that area, Joel's asked for a little bit more help. So we're looking at adding a, um, kind of an entry level position just to alleviate some of the stress. Um, and, and giving them a little bit more opportunities. One thing we did learn during COVID that it's the number of Chromebooks and the number of devices out there, uh, and, and we are woefully understaffed in that area. So that's something we're looking at. Um, we had some updates on a personnel issue, which I think had a fairly happy resolution, which is always nice. Uh, we looked at some retirements and resignations and some of the current openings. We're finding that there are a lot more. A lot of people decided to go into retirement as a result of COVID. Um, i- i- is probably a safe assumption. And I think maybe your priorities change when you go through what we've gone through in the past year. And I think that's about all we discussed. It was, it was a pretty quick, but a very robust and, and productive meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Are there any questions from the board on any committee reports? Seeing none, then I have just three brief updates. One is an invitation to the Garden State Coalition of Schools Annual Meeting this Wednesday, May 26th at 9:00 a.m. All board members are welcome. If you're interested in attending, please let me know. The second is the Somerset County School Boards Association Meeting, this also Wednesday, May 26th at 6:30 p.m. where officers for that association will be elected. And there shall be some sharing of, of, um, county activities. So that is 6:30 p.m. and you can self-register for that. And finally, I just wanted to share an update on the board goals, which is that the school board's policy persons, um, sent back the policy wellness checks. So Dr. Antunes and I are just reviewing it and then we will pass this along with governance so that we can discuss that at our next governance meeting. So with that, I'd like to open it up to the public for comments on the action agenda. And I will take first from participants in the room. Yes? Um, no, if you can do it at your computer, what is your name? Hi, Ms. Lento. Um, give me one moment. All right. So I promoted you to panelists and whenever you are joined, may... Oh wait, you know, actually, I'm so sorry. I have to, um, before you begin, Ms. Lento, I have to read this thing. "We very much welcome input from the public. During board meetings, there will be two 30-minute periods of time. The meeting will be open for public comments. Members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do so via Zoom, in person if they are attending in person, or via written comments sent by letter or email. During the first public comment period, members of the public may comment about items that are listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes. If time remains in this public comment period, members of the public may comment on any just school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district as per bylaw 167. Before you state your question or comments, you'll be asked to provide your name and address. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question and answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comments. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Open Public Meetings Act and the privacy rights of the public employees encompass therein do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session." So with that, Ms. Lento, whenever you're ready.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Uh, I would like to start out by saying thank you to, uh, Mrs. Trujillo for reaching out to me last week to discuss some of my concerns and questions, which I presented at last week's Q and A. Uh, I appreciate you listening to some of my ideas, having an open mind to some suggestions I presented. I'm glad that we both agree that our children have not been getting the education they need and are entitled to. This is in no way, shape, or form due to anything teachers have or have not done. Teachers are the unsung heroes this year. Having to adapt their teaching methods and reach their students with zero time and preparation to prepare. So I do thank each and every teacher in Hillsborough Public Schools for their dedication and unwavering support of our children this school year. On that note, the board is consistently behind other districts and adapting to changes and guidelines. We are often weeks, if not months, behind bringing particular groups of students and grade levels back to school compared to other districts in the area. I know there is nothing we can do about what has happened so far. Many mistakes have been made by the board and Dr. Antunes, but now is not the time to dwell on them. Now is the time to move forward. Dr. Antunes, you said in your last correspondence with parents, as well as just now, that you would like to reassure the entire community at this time, we are planning for a full return to school in September 2021, bearing any mandates, constraints, or restrictions from the state. Unfortunately, even though I have reached out to you, Dr. Antunes, over a dozen times this school year on clarification of exactly how you plan to achieve this, I have yet to receive a phone call, email, or any type of communication from you. The lack of transparency this year from you is extremely unprofessional and frustrating. We are currently operating at the outdated CDC guidelines to maintain six feet of social distancing between students. Even though on March 19th, the CDC changed recommendations to three feet. I am asking the board to formally adopt the new guidelines of three feet for next school year, since there will no longer be a virtual option for students and we will need to come up with a way to fit all the students in the buildings. We all know that we will never be able to have full days if the students remain six feet apart. Again, I ask the same question I have yet to get an answer to. How will we accommodate student lunches next school year? Current CDC guidelines are still recommending students to remain six feet apart without a mask. I have suggested using tents, as many other districts in the area are doing currently. But I have been told that that will not be an option for next school year. We cannot continue to hope that the social distancing guidelines will change, which is what we are doing now. We must plan for the worst-case scenario, which is students eating at six feet apart, so we are fully prepared to return students back to the classroom full-time in September. If we do not do this, students will be forced to eat lunch at home, therefore causing our schedule to shift back to half-days. As not only a parent, but as an educator in Somerset County, I am aware of the powers the Board of Education has and can exercise if needed. I am requesting the board to direct Dr. Antunes and her administration to create a plan for students to attend five full days in September. We should not hope for the guidance to change. We must have a plan to get our children back to a normal schedule regardless of guidelines in place. The board can create a plan with the current guidelines and can always adapt if regulations loosen. Anything less is unacceptable to our children and our families of Hillsborough. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Lento. Are there any other comments from folks in the room? Seeing none, then I will go to the online portion. And I'm not seeing any raised hands. Then I will turn to Mr. Mahmood if there were any letters or correspondence that the board has received for tonight.
Thank you, uh, President Trujillo. There were no letters or emails that were received by the board, uh, this, for this meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mahmood. I'm seeing no comments from the public, then I will now close public comments. And let's see. I did want to make a response, but I have to think about this. So I will move forward with the action agenda. Oh, sorry, the board. Say again? Oh, yes, sorry. Thank you. I'd like to now turn it over to board comments. Okay. Oh, Mr. Gillette.
So I, 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 um, I was wrong about something e- earlier this year. I really thought that, um, I, I really, really thought that the governor would, um, maintain the remote option for next year. I was certain of it. I couldn't see any reason for him. Uh, I certainly no advantage for him to remove that option from parents, but, uh, he did. He made that announcement a few weeks ago that there will be no remote option next year. So, um, there is no, there's no school in the state that can, um, that can go, that can have every, every child in school, um, full days, five days a week next year with even three-foot social distancing. He would have to remove all the social distancing. There's no, there's, there's no school in the state that can do it. There's just not enough room in the schools to do that. So, um, you'd have to assume that if he's removing the remote option, that the distancing requirements would also be removed. That's the only, that's the only, uh, explanation I can come up with. We have 50% of students in our schools now, 50%. That's all that elected to come back. I don't know if the, uh, public realizes that. I don't know if it's been stated enough. We opened it up for anybody that wanted to come back and we got 50%. And at 50%, some classrooms are, it's difficult to even maintain three feet of distance. So I don't see how, uh, with 100% that we, that we're going to be able to maintain that, um, for anything lunch or any other class. So I'm assuming that, um, that government knows what he's talking about. He, he made the call. And I don't think, uh, I have to ask this question of Dr. Antunes, but I don't believe that we're, that this school district is setting a policy either six feet or three feet, three feet. I think that policy is coming from, um, the Department of Education. Is that correct, Dr. Antunes?
Yes, as, and, and recommendations from school physician, the local department of health. And there are some school districts in New Jersey who are doing three feet. Uh, we chose to maintain six feet at the, at that recommendation that was provided to us. It's working for us. We've not had to shut down. We've not had to shut down many classes, a couple of classes here or there, or cla- or schools.
But is that, does the State Department of Education, is it now requiring their, in their guidelines, six feet of social distance?
Right now, I think it is, right? Yes, it absolutely is.
All right. So, so, so I think for us in New Jersey, as in, as in any state, I, um, I believe that the, the state, um, requirements overrule the CDC recommendations, unfortunately. Uh, that's the wa- that's the way that, I mean, CDC made a lot of recommendations, but, um, we saw that the, the recommendations for masks this week and the, and the governor of our state said, no, I'm not quite doing that quite yet. So, uh, the, I think the state, um, I believe that the state, uh, guidelines and, um, uh, restrictions have to apply here.
And, and districts may also have stricter guidelines as well if they choose to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Are there any other comments from the board? Okay, seeing none, then I'll move on now to approval of the public minutes. Um, thank you, Mr. Mahmood, for those minutes. They were quite good. And let's see. So may I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette, and thank you, Mr. Kidd. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Mahmud. And now I will turn it over to Dr. Antunes for the action agenda.
Okay, so we'll start with the organization portion of the meeting. And typically, Mr. Mahmud, please correct me if I'm wrong, typically, the board moves this as a whole, 11.1 to 11.20. And it would be on behalf of the board, the recommendation for the organization is being made to designate signatories, the official newspapers, depositories of school funds, the board auditors, the board attorney, architect of record, school physicians, insurance brokers of record, school warrants, board policies, job descriptions, school district curricula, field trip destinations, strong model for evaluations, NJSIAA Skylid Conference participants, affirmative action officer and Title IX coordinator, Section 504 officer, the liaison for homeless students, board secretary, and the attendance officer.
Thank you, Dr. Antunes. May I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette, for the first. Thank you, Mr. Kidd, for the second. Any discussion?
Yeah. Oh, I'm stuck with someone. Okay. I'm sorry, okay, so on 11.13, field trip destinations, I just wanted to point out that each year, and maybe you guys know what I'm going to say, each year, we have to re-approve. Field trip destinations have already been approved. And I guess this regulation went into effect in 2007, because the oldest one is 2007 on here. I think in 2008, we approved dozens, 100 of them that year, I remember. And then we've added some over the years and re-approved them. Yet, we're going to have a graduation next month. Boy, it doesn't approve that. We don't have any input into that at all. It's kind of, I'm, I'm sorry to be a broken record on this, but I don't understand why the board's not approving the, or, or anything about the, the graduation location, but we have to prove this every year. So I'm just putting my two cents in again on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Mr. Oliver?
Forgive me with my computer issues here. I, I just wanted to, you know, bring up again, we had some discussion at our last board meeting about reappointments, auditors, attorneys, architect, things like that. We, there was discussion about how that gets bid out. It gets bid out every three years. And, and we were looking to really do that every year or every two years. I think we, you know, there was some discussion about doing it every year. That was going to get deferred to the operations committee. I still don't see anything about that, but yet we're on the agenda for this reappointment to occur. So I, I'm just trying to understand where that's going and what we're doing with that.
Ms., sounds like Mr. Gillette, if you would like to address that?
Well, we, I'll, I'm going to brief and let Mr. Merini speak, but we did discuss it. I certainly didn't, we certainly didn't have the consensus to, to change anything the way we're doing it now. So we, we, we left it as is for now. And we know we talked about some specific, some specific goals that we're trying to achieve through that, which I, which are sort of, might be of a sensitive nature, which I, I didn't, I didn't report when I made a report.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Mr. Merini?
Yeah, so, so for this item, we discussed at the operations committee that obviously these appointments are required and will complete them every year. It was also made very clear during the meeting that we are under no obligation to then use those vendors for any period of time after that approval. So at any point in time, we could review and potentially adjust those vendors. I'm in with the meeting, and he basically said, "Hey, if we want to look at these, we may make a recommendation every year as to whether or not we want to go to an RFI process, at which point the board would review, and if we decide to go to an RFI process, we would do that and then make a decision, decision on whether we'd go to RFP." So we would limit the amount of effort and time that this would put on Mr. Mahmud's schedule and look at those starting this year, kind of as an assessment, and see what we want to do. The formal review period would stay the same, and we would just keep this process as one-off without the necessity to change any process that we currently have in place.
Thank you, Mr. Merini. Ms. Stats?
Thank you, Mr. Trujillo. Regarding item 11.12, the school district curricula, I noticed that it still has, for grade six, the advanced math, advanced English, oh, I'm sorry, advanced writing, advanced reading, and also ASI for each of those. With a discussion about detracking, the plan has been to eliminate those. So again, it's not written in stone yet, but that is the plan. And I'm just thinking there should be some, maybe an asterisk that those may be removed. Some or all of them may be removed by September.
Thank you, Stats.
Mrs. Stats, we actually talked about that, and I have to apologize because we did make that change, and it doesn't look like it made it up. So we will make sure that that, we did make that change after our exchange today. So I apologize for that.
Thank you.
Ms. Nurse, and then Ms. Kidd.
With the change, can you just be specific about what exactly it does say, since we're voting on it?
Is that, Dr. Felstra, do you have that?
Yeah, it says, yep, it says "may be eliminated during the 2021-2022 school year."
Thank you, Dr. Felstra. Mr. Kidd?
Oh, I just wanted to address Mr. Gillette's comments regarding the graduation versus field trip approval. I think at least the mindset behind not having the approval of the graduation location this year, at least a specific one, was because of the continually changing guidelines from both the state and, and federal CDC and all of the, and all those processes, processes involved. Also adding the red tape of having to bring this through a committee and then the board meeting to get it approved, I think could have made actually scheduling it, scheduling it at that location difficult in that short timeframe. So I think I just, I just wanted to enlighten the fact that that could have been the logic behind that.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd.
Mrs. Trujillo?
Yes, Mr. Mahmud?
I, I just wanted to chat a little bit about the, the comment from Mr. Merini, Mr. Oliver, Mr. Gillette, about the professional services, just to follow up, that during Ops, we absolutely went through details of that and that there was, I think, you know, that, that issue of can we actually look at an RFI or an RFQ in this case? And that was feasible with the recommendation from the administration. You know, as we go through, that was discussed. We will bring it back to Ops, but as Mr. Oliver, just so you know, that, that can be done at any time. And that would, we would do the work on our end to sort of calculate that. And there was some discussion about how we define that. But we, the, the issue was that we could do it and that we would if, if the, if we felt that there was a recommendation to kind of go there. So we just, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, Mr. Oliver, I know because you had that question, that that is doable at any time.
So that just leads me to what, just maybe some clarification, that if you can give me an RFI or an RFQ. So an RFI is less cumbersome on the administration to obtain. The RFQ requires more details.
So, so RFI, request for information or request for qualification are both the same. And RF, a real like bid or an RFQ, I'm sorry, an RFP would take a lot more work. So if we were to do an RFQ, that's a lot less work, because that's not outlined and as detailed as an RFQ. An RFQ, request for qualifications, or an RFI, as Paul had mentioned, are both less work for the administration. So we would be able to calculate that a little bit differently and look at the results of that a little differently. And, you know, Greg had mentioned at the Ops meeting that we'd have to define that, and that's something we're going to have to work on. But the answer to your question is yes, Mr. Oliver, that an RFQ is a lot less work than an RFP.
Okay, and then, so we're currently not, and I guess that goes back to my initial question. So we're currently not evaluating the outside vendors on an annual basis. We evaluate them every three years. And that's still going to be the process going forward. That, that's why I still have a problem with this, voting on this agenda item tonight, because, as I've said before, we are going to get hit with a huge budget cut again next year from state aid, and we need to be looking to save every nickel we possibly can today. So I'm still not comfortable with this.
Ms. Stats?
It's my understanding that we have the, the schedule of every three years for reviewing some of these positions, just to sort of force us to do it all the time, you know, automatically. But that, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that precludes us from choosing to discontinue or not renew a contract that is not aligned with the three-year schedule, correct? Okay, so it's not binding. It's like, oh, wow, we, we just reviewed them last year. Now we have to wait another few years, but we got, make some cutbacks, but we can't touch them. No. We can still choose to not renew someone's contract any one, any year.
At any time.
At any time, right, exactly. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Oliver. Does that address some of your concerns as, they're muted?
It, it does, but I, you know, to that point, I would like to separate those items out. And I would also like to separate from the vote out 11.12.
You could identify, Mr. Oliver, the, the items that you wanted to separate out. I know 11.12.
So it would be 11.12, and then all of the appointments for the common year. All of the outside vendor appointments.
So are you talking a board auditor at 11.4?
11.4, 11.5, 11.6, 11.7, 11.8.
11.6, 11.7, you said 11.8.
11.4 to 11.8 and 11.12.
11.4 to 11.8. So I believe we had a motion in a second, Mr. Mahmud, already? So then, right now,
Yes.
for in terms of voting, we'll vote on everything except for 11.4 to 11.8 and 11.12. Those will be separate, so. Okay, so if we could have a roll call, Mr. Mahmud, for everything except for 11.4 to 11.8 and 11.12.
Absolutely. Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Mr. Merini?
Yes.
Mrs. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
And Mr. Trujillo?
Yes. Okay, so now we will have the vote on the separated-out items, 11.4 to 11.8 and 11.12. And, Mr. Gillette, was there any further comments from you? I thought maybe you had your hand up. No?
I just wanted, I, I just wanted to just explain again that, before Mr. Mahmud got to the district, professionals that we had longstanding relationships with, like the architect, or the auditor who'd been here for decades, maybe, never was reviewed at all, any year. Just, oh, they're doing a good job. We never looked to see anything else, to see what was, was available. Mr. Mahmud suggested that we at least go out every three years. It, it's, I think it's worked well, and that's, yeah, so. Just so you understood that. But in any case, I'm going to vote. Oh, you didn't, you didn't do the roll call yet.
Ms. Nurse, thank you, Mr. Gillette.
Dr. Felstra, I'm so sorry. One more time, it says "may be removed," possibly, right? What's the exact word? I'm so sorry.
"May be eliminated during the 2021-2022 school year."
Thank you.
Mr. Lapira, actually, I have a question for you. So this appointment for 11.4 to 11.8 requires simply a majority of the board present tonight, so that would be four?
Probably a majority of those present and voting.
Alright. And what happens if we don't appoint tonight?
Well, then, if you don't appoint, then you're going to have to appoint at a later meeting whoever those professionals are going to be.
Okay, because that's kind of critical, especially since we have two board members missing tonight, so.
It is critical and highly unlikely that that occurs in at least my career. Mr. Mahmud?
I agree. We do want to be able to, to consider that with these professionals. At the moment, it would be a little bit difficult to work as we trans, you know, but everybody has to have their conscience, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mahmud. Thank you, Mr. Lapira and Dr. Antunes. Okay, is there any further discussion before we take a roll call? Seeing none, Mr. Mahmud?
Mrs. Gillette?
Yes to the professionals, no to 11.12.
Thank you. Mr. Kidd?
Uh, yes to both.
Thank you. Mr. Merini?
Um, I will abstain.
Okay. Ms., Mrs. Nurse?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Oliver?
Y'all may know on both.
Okay. Mrs. Stats?
Yes to all of them.
And then Mrs. Trujillo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. That was close. Alright, so now I'll turn it back over to Mr. Dr. Antunes.
Thank you. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the education agendas as follows, 12.1 to 12.5. Motion to approve the staff for the ELL summer program as listed. Motion to approve staff to administer the measure, the MODEL test, which is the measure of developing English language proficiency assessments during the summer months. Motion to approve the fiction books as outlined. Motion to accept the grant funds, funds from the NJA Frederick L. Hip Foundation for Excellence in Education. And motion to approve the adoption of the Open SIAID program.
Thank you, Dr. Antunes. May I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Stats. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Mahmud, if you could have a roll call, please?
Charlie, Mrs. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Mr. Merini?
Yes.
Mrs. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
And Mr. Trujillo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the Human Resources agendas as follows, 13.1 to 13.15. We've already approved 13.6.1. Motion to approve the retirements and resignations as listed. And I'd like to, to thank Margie Rothblatt, who's the computer teacher at Alton Road School, for 21 years of service to our staff and students. Motion to approve transfer, change, and assignment. Motion to approve contact, contract changes. Motion to approve revised leaves of absence and approved leaves of absences. Motion to approve appointments as listed. Motion to approve appoint, I'm sorry, motion to approve appointments for 2020, 2021 as listed. And motion to approve appointments 21, 22 as listed.
Thank you, Dr. Antunes. May I have a motion in a second?
A motion to approve extra coverage and tenure-certificated staff as listed. Motion to approve HEA office personnel and clerical assistants, parking lot attendants. Motion to approve instructional assistants for 21, 22, and the lunch aids for 2021, 22. And motion to approve policies and regulations for first reading as listed, and to abolish the policy and regulations as listed as well. That was a long one, Mrs. Trujillo.
Thank you, Dr. Antunes. Now may I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Stats. Thank you, Mr. Merini. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Mahmud, if you could have a roll call, please?
Charlie, Mrs. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Mr. Merini?
Yes.
Mrs. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
And, Mr. Hea?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the oxygenes as follows, fourteen dot one to fourteen dot eight. Motion to approve the monthly bills. Motion to approve the monthly financial statement. Motion to approve the Sodexo Food Services Management Contract for the 2021-2022 school year. Motion to approve cafeteria lunch prices. Motion to approve the resolution for lease purchase of phone equipment. Motion to award the HES roofing project and the HEF, HES paving project. And a motion to approve the bylaw for first reading.
Thank you, Dr. Antunes. May I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, if we could have a roll call, Mr. Mahmud?
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Mr. Marini?
Yes.
Mrs. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
And, Mr. Hea?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Now I'd like to turn it back to the board, then the public, then the board again for any comments on any topic. Or any updates that they'd like to share from the board. Okay, seeing none, then I'd like to now open it back to the public. To begin with, the people in the room, Ms. Smith. Let me find, there we go. And I'll promote you to panelist and whenever you're ready.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, I'm Christina Smith, HEA Second Vice President and Pride Chair. I just had a quick pride update. On Friday, May fourteenth, Borough Safe Hillsborough Community Collaborative dedicated to mental health and awareness and suicide prevention. Sponsored Hope for Tomorrow, a mental health and wellness fair on the grounds of the municipal complex. This group's mission is to provide access to mental health resources, emotional well-being, and best practices for suicide prevention across the entire Hillsborough community. The HEA Pride Committee was proud to support this event through a grant from the NGA Pride. The Pride Committee also had a table at the event further building community relationships. In addition, on May twenty-first, the HEA Pride Committee worked with the Ark of Somerset County. The Ark of Somerset County serves individuals with developmental disabilities and their families from birth through the senior years of life through many programs and services in Somerset County. They work with over one thousand four hundred children, adults, and their families in thirty-three locations, including twenty-seven group homes, some of which are in Hillsborough. Members of the committee, along with members of HEI, completed a beautification project at a group home in Hillsborough by doing some landscaping at the group home. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that update, Ms. Smith. Are there any other comments from participants in the room, the best today? Seeing none, then I'll go to the, the online room. Ms., Mr. Gordon, whenever, I will promote you to panelist. And whenever you're ready.
Sorry about that. I don't know how to change the name.
There, okay.
Hi, Dana Gordon for Dumont Round. First, I want to thank you for committing to a plan that has kept the safety of our students and community first. While COVID has divided many people, it seems to have helped build a stronger relationship in the Hillsborough School District, and in turn, that's a positive result for our students. I wanted to take a moment to ask the board if we could consider hosting or arranging a vaccination clinic for students. And perhaps when we could plan vaccination clinics for students when the younger students are available to get the vaccine as well. Currently, New Jersey has several schools offering these vaccination clinics to accommodate their students. With the first school that did it being Greenbrook. This would allow parents to easily and quickly get their children vaccinated without having to search online or find a new location or go somewhere distant. Somerset County is, is organizing these with any school district or any other entity that's interested in hosting a pop-up clinic. All you have to do is call the COVID hotline for more information. Lastly, I want to give a quick update on those numbers. I'm hesitantly optimistic to say that we have shown great improvement. When I look at the case counts from a year ago, the cases in 2020 seem to fi, seem to have followed a similar curve. This information is available on the Hillsborough 311 website. You can compare it and contrast it yourself if you look there. I hope that the summer shows much of the same movement as it had last year, and I hope that we'll have with the increased vaccinations, more days with zero case counts. I am also hopeful that the fall will not show the same sharp increase that we saw this past year. Age-wise, we've seen a flattening of our curve of our older community members. However, our youngest community members still have a gradual climb with the ages zero to nine still climbing at a gradual curve. While it's easy to be complacent during beautiful weather and hearing great news on our numbers, we still need to be mindful that there are still variants out there. And we still need to be diligent and must continue to test ourselves. And if we're in contact with somebody, make sure we get tested or if we have symptoms. Again, thank you so much for everything you've done this year. It's been a great year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon. Are there any other comments from participants online? Go in. Okay, seeing none and none in the room, then I will close public comments and yes, I'm closing public comments and then I will go to the board. Yes. Yes, thank you, Miss Nurse. And so, public comments is closed. I'm Miss Nurse, please.
Um. I was thinking about how we voted on the curricula, eleven point twelve, and the only thing that I could see as a reason that maybe some people voted no was the issue with de-tracking. And it was talked about in at least two committees recently with, with, with the reports. And also, an update, I think that came from the Education Committee about with the retirements that we're not really sure if we're pumping the brakes or, or what's happening. I have always been a proponent of having a presentation at a board meeting to talk about the research because personally, as an educator, I, I, I still haven't had the research needed to make an informed decision about why the district might be considering it. I know it has been presented to fifth grade parents. I know we're trying to get it down to K to four, but for me, I, I really believe it's a district-wide program because all of our children will eventually get to sixth grade. So I, I still have thoughts about why sixth grade is, is the magic number. When we have advanced courses and a lot of other grades as well. So I just think to benefit the public, I, I'm again interested, and I voted yes, seeing that it was in, in the eleven point twelve agenda figuring, okay, I'm gonna vote this in. And then if we they try to pull it, that might have to go through board approval again because we approved it in there. It's been since asterisk with a may be changed or taken out for next year. But I still, I voted yes anyway because I believe that the district will do its due diligence in informing the public. So again, I'm asking that it be considered that we have a public presentation at a board meeting. So to understand the research that is driving the decision and also maybe getting a more specific status about where exactly we are in the decision-making. Other than through a committee report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nurse. Are there any other comments, Ms. Stats?
I just want to support what Ms. Nurse said. I do agree also that we should have some sort of presentation at the board meeting. As a member of the Communications Committee and just as just a, a good reflection of the board as a whole to reflect transparency and good communication to the community in general, and especially parents of our students.
Thank you, Ms. Stats. Mr. Oliver, I'm not sure if you have your hands raised or that
I did. I, I just want, you know, again, to that point, you know, eleven, twelve, and, and, you know, I voted no on those. I didn't feel I had enough information to make a decision that was best supportive of the public, so that's why I'm a no vote. I, I hope we continue exploring those options that we talked about. But I, I just wanted to clarify that because Ms. Nurse brought up a very good point. You know, it, it was, you know, telling the governor, I know Greg's looking at me going, it's story time to John again, but this is gonna be pretty brief. And the governor came out with his announcement today, and we don't have to wear masks on Friday if we're vaccinated and you know, people read snippets and they think, oh, great, kids go to school and they don't have to wear masks. But there's a lot of different rules, you know, which we pointed out tonight, and, you know, there's the asterisk there that said we still need to wear them in elementary schools and secondary schools and the Department of Education, although it's a branch of the state of New Jersey, kind of trumps what we could do from the state of New Jersey. So they're, they're very, they're very conflicting in as much as you know, I look at my personal views, you don't have to look at the, at the community in whole. And as, as much as we want to get back to normal, we're, we're just not there yet. I know Dr. Antunes and the administration worked very, very hard to try to get our children back in school full-time for a couple of weeks for the remainder of this school year, just to kind of see what it was like, just to give them a little bit of a taste. It's, it's not able to happen. Logistically, it's just not gonna work. There were just too many variables that had to be worked out. So my point is, this administration is working hard to try to get back to normal. They're, they're, they have conflicting guidelines they have to deal with. They have to deal with the guidelines from the Department of Education. So Governor Murphy comes out and says, no masks, that doesn't necessarily mean we can go no masks. If they say six feet or three feet, that doesn't necessarily mean we could do that right away. So as much as I am as frustrated as every other parent out there that it's not happening fast enough, they're working hard at it, and, and I want to thank the administration for that because I think they really are. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver and Mr. Gillette.
Yeah, so just a couple of things real quick. To follow up on what John was saying. Ironically, i- it seems after, thinking about this for a while, it seems it'd be easier to go to a full day of school when everybody is in school. And then there's no remote. I think that's one of the big logistical problems of it. What do you do with the, the remote kids who, many of them in the upper grades do not, are not in front of their screen continuously the whole day? Do they now switch to a format where they're, like in high school, where they're at a class all day long on the computer? Which are not, which they don't have now. So it, it, I, I was very much for try, you know, I, I thought, yeah, look, if you can solve the lunch problem, there's not that many kids in school, we can do it. But when I saw this, I kind of agree with John. The logistics of having a full day doesn't, doesn't make it worth it right now. It'd be easy to have a full day when they're, when they're all in the same place. So that's one thing. The second thing is, I have to say, I wouldn't be favor of promoting any vaccine drive that promotes vaccines for little kids. I mean, that to me is, is not following the science at all. The younger the kids are, the, 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 the less consequences they have from this virus. And, you know, they, they rarely get seriously ill from it and rarely pass it to anybody. You know, any vaccine drive that's gonna promote vaccines for kids twelve and under, ten and under especially, leave me out. I'm, I'm voting no on that. If you had something for high school kids, I don't know. I, I think, yeah, sure. But if I had little kids now, I, I wouldn't be vaccinating them. And, and we're not supposed to talk about our personal stuff here, but all you all do all the time. So I'll throw that in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette, Ms. Stats, and then Mr. Kidd.
I don't think any vaccine has been approved for under twelve yet anyway. So I, I, I took it as Ms. Gordon saying maybe in the future, if a vaccine were approved for under twelve, maybe having that available. But, and also, I think I think we're planning on having a, you know, changing subject here. Planning some, a, a group of, you know, different kinds of stakeholders to address you know, the school year starting in September and how to address all the issues. And that would consist of people from all, you know, parents, students, maybe even students, teachers, administration, board members to help come up with a feasible plan.
Thank you, Ms. Stats. Mr. Kidd?
I just wanted to say that, you know, I, I, I've been keeping up with some of the news. And I know that at least Pfizer is, appears to be on its way to full FDA approval, not just emergency approval. So I think that the possible drawbacks of vaccination for younger kids could then disappear for the most part. So I think that in, in that case, it would make sense to at least provide the option. It would not, it would of course, it of course would be a compulsory drive. And anyway, a compulsory thing like that would be up to the state and not for an individual district to decide, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd. So I just wanted to take a moment to, I was pondering what the previous public comment was in the first portion Ms. Lento has left since. And although her, her sentiments are not unique, many parents and many community members have been critical of the administration of the board, of the superintendents, and I just think that's not fair. It's not fair. So one thing that I wanted to, to say, and I think she addressed a comment that I made that I don't remember making, so I will share my personal experience, my children have learned. And I know that everybody's situation is different. I think that the staff members are doing the best that they can, and students are thriving. They, they are. Some, some maybe not as much as others, and that's something that will need to be addressed in the, in the coming weeks and months as we get back to normal. What I wanted to say too is that when, when parents in the community compare Hillsborough to other districts, it's not fair because we're not the same. And so one of the letters that we had received compared Hillsborough to Edison. Edison had a reopening and showed a video about how they were going back full days. And so I reached out to their board president and he was very open with what their district was going through. And that they have a much larger district. It's nineteen schools with about seventeen thousand students and twenty-two hundred staff, so more than twice ours, and they have thirty percent of their students who chose to be in person. So that right there explains how they're able to go full-time because they're able to have that six-feet distancing for lunch. They do use tents for outside, but again, they have a smaller population, so, who are coming back in person. So that is just one example. One thing that I had asked him was, are you planning to announce detailed plans for September? And what he said was the situation is fluid. If they were to announce something now and something were to change, do the, does the parent, do the parents and community want the district to change the plan at the last minute? So I have to say and, and thank Dr. Antunes and the administration that the plans that have been laid out have been very thoughtful with the intent, with the number one driving force to keep the health and safety of our students and staff foremost. So thank you, Dr. Antunes. Thank you, Mr. Mahmud, and your entire staff for that. So that is just one example of how comparisons with other districts are just not not useful, basically. We are all doing our best and we are planning, and the, every expectation is to have a full reopening in September twenty-two-one. And we are all moving forward in the same direction to make that happen. So that's what I wanted to say. Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, then it is nine oh one, and I will now entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Nurse.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Thank you. Good night, and we will see you back on Monday, June fourteenth, I believe. Thank you very much. Good evening.